Four o'clock, please uh salvage your cell phones.
It's already started.
Please stand for quick.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Any issues, please?
I'm making motion for adopt the agenda.
Motion made, seconded, put in the paper. We're here to hold on the consent of the attendants.
Most of the approved consent, the jet has presented.
Motion is made, seconded, put in the paper. Move on down to public comment. Citizens may address counsel on items on the agenda or none on the agenda out of respect for their members in attendance. Please limit your comments to three minutes, please state your name and address for the record. You have any public comment? Did you hear him done? Move on down to department reports, nine one one, stop from here. Uh fire attendants.
I have nothing further unless you have questions.
Okay. Public works, Jeff?
Um I don't really have too much other than uh I think during your last meeting I was up in Portland looking at that five yard dump truck and it turned out to be not too good, it was about sixty percent rust in the way and it was misrepresented by the people trying to sell it, so we went away from that. We're looking at another truck in Sacramento now, it's a little bit older, but it's in much nicer condition, a few pictures of it.
Right there.
It's a five yard, has a GMC diesel engine in it, um automatic transmission. Small enough that the guy is even without a CBL can drive it. It's not exactly what we need, it'll need to be revamped just a little bit, it has a sander on it that takes up a bit of the space in the bed. We probably move the sander and just seal it up. Everything else we found is twice the price of this one and most of them don't have a snowplow on, so the fact that this one has a snowplow is in good shape even though it's it's a ninety seven truck. Has a real good solid snowplow, new cutting edges, pretty much what we need. It's owned by an individual and uh I was trying to avoid having to drive to Sacramento to look at it and so he felt strongly enough about the sale, he would have it shipped to us and if we decided not to take it, we just pay the shipping back, would be about seven hundred dollars. So he said, you know, there's nothing wrong with it, he bought it, uh he's been using it, it works great. It's just too big for what he he clears snow and cold socks. And so uh he said he felt, you know, strongly that we would would want it, so I think rather than take another couple days and run down there, let's have him send it up and, you know, it's gonna be washed and wages and to bring it back, so we'd have to drive it home, we don't have a truck to haul it, so we'd have to take two people, we'd have to drive it home, so I think I'll have it shipped up here and.
How many of yours is it?
It's five.
That's what you were looking at?
Yeah, yeah, we got a real nice, almost new plow on it, very little new. Pretty much what we want.
Okay. Okay.
It's seventeen thousand dollars, where the last one you looked at was twenty six. A few years newer, but this has basically the same miles and much, much less rust.
Uh Daryl's not here. Uh we'll move on to Michelle. You have anything to report?
Um we have been uh did a really great job of collecting delinquents, uh water and sewer bills um and those who are in repairs considerably that we haven't seen anything or payments since two thousand sixteen, who've been taken to small police court and they seem to be responding, so it's really great. Um and uh that's about, that's about all this, all this something to do.
Let's move on down to the whole business, Lake County Fairgrounds master plan proposal. What up, that was kind of in a gray area.
Has anybody talked to Ronnie regarding the application? Does any, sorry. Um has anybody talked to Ronnie about filling out the actual application? Any of that is working?
I haven't seen Ronnie.
Uh I think we just need to decide on this and and, you know, send a nice letter saying we would gladly accept your application. I think that's what we need to do and, but um, yeah, I think that's, I'll give her call. So, or I can send the letter, which, whichever the. I think, I think the letter would have the, have the application as.
Okay.
In the beginning.
I would recommend if you're gonna do that, are you guys asking, are you guys asking for a thought application based on that project or?
No, I think a conversation needs to be had for what we discussed last two years ago.
When, when we send her the letter, we would have the um form with the, that explains the criteria.
So you'd like me to write a letter and put the application in saying we'd like you to resubmit?
No, the, well, we don't, we'd like her to, but I mean to have to, she's welcome to do that, okay.
So are you guys actually denying what's been submitted at this time, at least that?
Uh table, I think we discussed table.
Well, um we said it's in such a gray area that it wasn't, it really wasn't meet the criteria for the lodging tax front.
That's correct.
I think it, from what you have told us, it doesn't meet the state law requirements.
Correct.
So I shouldn't vote on it in the line, but she wants to resubmit and she can resubmit.
She can submit for another project.
For another project.
Because I do think if they did something specific like a specific tourism prevention campaign or promoting tourism, a general advertising campaign for the whole year even or something along those lines, those type of things definitely fall within that. And that, or if they did resubmit this with that this strategic plan was just for tourism promotion, that might get there depending on what the application is, but what I'm seeing here, it doesn't even mention tourism, what they're doing.
Well, well, I disagree with your statement that it doesn't, is not used majority of the time for tourism. When I sat down and wrote down month to month what I knew of, the majority of it was tourism, very little is local use that is not tourism related. Holly of Zars gun, gun show, um you know, in the past, we got October Fest, there are numerous things. So I think what, um because now you gotta remember Ronnie submitted this prior to us coming up with our ordinance. So um obviously our ordinance came into effect with a lot more focus on tourism, but I think that um the use of it is most definitely, and I mean I can give you a long list of other communities that have used fairgrounds for, that are used much more by the locals than they are for tourism events that have used funds. I don't, I don't believe that it is a concern of mine that it is tourism related. However, her wording would certainly benefit to be more tourism related and talk about all the, the events that are held there outside of local.
And I would mention that we are talking, regardless of what we put in our ordinance, our ordinance takes directly from state law, so those categories are what we have to be under. Um again, if the strategic planning was related to tourism promotion or those events that were, so again, she could resubmit with an application that was more designed towards that direction, with the application maybe that will help them focus that.
Yeah, I think the wording simply needs to be, I mean, the, the application or the proposal, I believe is what it was, was geared towards the building and the use of the building mostly their long-term plan, not so much specific events. So um I think that uh if we table it indefinitely, then there's no decision made one way or another, we don't have to turn it down, we don't have to vote on it, she can come back and submit an actual application with that understanding that.
So you, if we table it, it's on our agenda.
Actually table it indefinitely. Uh if you table it indefinitely, it means there's no decision. And it's dead essentially.
So most of the difference is just denying and have her resubmit.
Well, I mean, I, I would go completely, I can't do without the word, but it doesn't fit in the peruse not being related to tourism.
So, but the way it's written, it's not. So I, I have no problem with, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have her resubmit. Make the motion that we vote on this and either approve or deny it and have her resubmit.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to either approve or deny?
There was a.
I just made a motion.
Well, you want to have a second?
No second.
So before we vote, just one last discussion point, um that I'd like to just talk about this. With the lodging tax, um if I recall right now, they'll have a law, I mean they have our, our application guideline in front of me, but remember the law talking about facilities that can go towards facilities?
It can, they are substantially related to tourism or specific types of facilities. And um Helton would, the, this, these are taken directly from the ORS, so what's in here is what the law is, this is a direct quote, so.
So because of what you, you've said, you know, on the record is, is, you know, it doesn't meet the criteria.
Well, and the other thing is this budget on here is for the um, yeah, or the, the people making the plan.
Master.
It's to pay for the master plan, which um is a good idea to be doing, but I don't think it meets the law, what we can.
Yeah, we all, we, we absolutely as a group want fun, tourism out there, just not the plan for the facilities that will then be changed.
Although it, it could, if there was a portion of the master plan that was generated for strategic planning or tourism use, that I think would fall under that, but it needs to be clearly articulated that way and it needs to be that portion of it. Other portions of the plan that are long-term just use in general, like the locals and stuff like that, would really fall under criteria. So if they came back in, for example, and said, okay, we are looking at X, Y, and Z as tourism-related strategic to improve our buildings, improve our advertising or something along those lines in the tourism area, that portion of the plan, I think you guys would be able to approve. So it just really does come down to, I should kind of what you guys are discussing, what, how they phrase it and then obviously in the council, then it would sit without following that case. And then that way we'd be able to track.
For example, forty thousand requested, I should say forty thousand dollar budget. And of that ten thousand requested, and they say quarter, the building or quarter of gold used is tourism related.
It would need to be master planning to enable tourism.
Or a market.
Because this is in the area that's for future, this falls under tourism promotion, under conducting strategic planning and research necessary to stimulate future tourism, that's what they would need shoehorned it in under.
Yeah.
And I don't need shoehorn, I need to fit, that's the category they would need fitted with the master plans. Master plans are future planning for pre-use, so that's what they would really need to, and I, if it was me, I would have the person that's writing up the master plan proposal write to that specific category and maybe reject Orla send out with that language, just so that they, just as a.
So, just to be, I hate to belabor the vote, but just to be clear, is that we, we approved a budget of new revenue coming in of seventy five thousand burden on this at seventy percent and that's roughly quarterly received at twenty thousand a quarter. Um where we were gonna vote on these every quarter, applications, um and then that's the one that we set a policy that we're gonna try to retain fifty percent. When we, prior to voting on the thirty that was, was given to the roundup, what was, the budget remaining was fifty thousand, which only left us twenty to begin with, which again, our policy was we were gonna try to retain fifty percent of this seventy five that we have budgeted. Knowing that there was some carryover, um it'd be interesting to see exactly where we're at today, um but I think we just need a vote. But I just wanted to keep the public continually reminding them that we, we're gonna vote on these quarterly moving forward. This one was ongoing, I'm glad, this is the last. But I'm pretty confident that she can resubmit something like we can.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
And the number. Probably help a lot.
And remember, as you guys discussed too, if she wants to use other funds for something, she could just say, you know what, our marketing budget for tourism, because that would clearly fall within it. You can leverage funds, just because you're moving funds from one place to another, as long as it's a tourism way, we don't really care what they do internally as long as they're using our funds for tourism purposes, so they wanted to use us for their marketing budget for the entire year. For tourism stuff out of the area, they could absolutely do that, yeah.
So Michelle, please.
Okay, but Joe, you have a motion in the second. Um how many uh approve the current application for what she approved or sent to us?
What they're asking to deny.
Yeah, can you read the motions and deny it?
Okay, so I may agree to deny it.
I agree.
Okay. All right, now we're done with that, move on down. Ordinance eight seventeen, ordinance prohibiting the practice of feeding baby and or any kind of wildlife in any area subject in the jurisdiction of the town that might be declaring an emergency. Um Michelle has come up with something that she talked to fishing game about, how's that her statement?
So I called the fishing game and asked them what would be the next steps. Um and they did say that we need to enforce and then we can start um hiring someone to come in and um dispose, trying to find the right words here, I'm trying to cover it. Um dispose of them and we can either take them and dispose of the carcasses or we can also go ahead and have them, what's that word?
Process.
Well, I think we just got it. So, but this, go ahead, finish.
So I asked, well, could we maybe skip a little bit of that enforcement to clear out ninety of the male deer? So that the population, because there's over a hundred right now and at the expense of God and the city. So I'm wondering if we could, I asked if we could do twenty and continue to enforce, so we have like kind of a five to six year plan of moving this along, um and he said that that would be fine and he referred me to what's in your pocket um that's attached. Um and so the next step that would be on me is to call and see how much it would cost to have an agent come in and put the deer down and either to go to the pit or, and it's a price for having it go over to a USDA approved packing house and then bring it back and we can distribute it to the community. So I'll give those two prices for you, but that's the next step as it, it's just an idea.
Which I get, so I talked to one of the big departments of going this and they don't even want that animal to be utilized either, which I don't personally, I mean, yeah, I love the of Mount the Woods when I go hunting, because they're obviously not used, or they're used people. So I do, but that's not, I don't think the goal, it's mostly to get people to stop feeding them first. Um is what they voice their concern as, which I understand. Um you know, there is, there is an opportunity to relocate them, I don't know what the expense of that or the ease of that would be.
I asked him that and he said they would not survive.
And I, and I get that, I mean, I, I understand.
Or they'll return.
Or no.
I would like it overturned.
Or some.
I don't know, they don't, because they're these insects, I mean, they, they're, they're.
They just wouldn't survive, so.
Michelle, can I ask you a question, did he mention whether or not that they, they currently thought that these deer were a present safety, health, or property damage concern? Because without the ordinance, that's the other method that they, under the regs, so have they made that determination that we're at that level yet or are they not sure?
I, I asked him that and that's, they are not, unless they are specifically a deer that is.
So that's one that's where you've got a problem animal that keeps.
Still totally something they will handle.
Okay.
If there's an actual animal they have concerns, they take phone calls, you know, they don't do injured animals because they will naturally pack, you know, um but if there's one that is like attacking children, other animals, you know, not necessarily during rush, um then they will go out and take care of those, that doesn't happen.
So that's when they make that determination, but they won't do it at a, but they don't feel like right now, for instance, carrying capacity that the pure population levels meet that, so the credit to this then would be doing this ordinance, if that's what you guys wanted to do, do some housing program now.
I was just trying to get a step out to move it forward and presenting that to you and then it's up to council. So if you want me to go ahead and call and get pricing for those two options I can, or I'm just wanting to move it forward somehow.
Well, even if, even if you didn't put it out there to stop feeding them, they're still gonna come. Yeah, still gonna stay right here, oh yeah, until we start eliminating them out of here, then we're gonna have, we're gonna still have problems.
And then I did want to address Sandy's concern about the fine schedule, something that I have seen done in prior town ordinances that are kind of in this category is adopting the current violation schedule for the state, they have a kind of an A, B, C, D violation. And what they normally do in these ordinances is they say the first offense is warnings, second offense is the Ds, um and then going up. And that fine schedule starts for a class D one hundred fifteen, class C one hundred sixty five, class B two sixty five, class A one hundred and forty. So if you guys are wanting a progressive schedule, there's kind of a natural one that we could do instead of two fifty, if that's something council's more would be more acceptable to council.
Which would be more susceptible to that and also the first should be a more.
Right, and that's, that's what a lot, that, that's, that would be something we'd add, and first um they would reach out and then kind of go up from there.
It would be the term who's gonna actually issue that on, it's probably the state, I mean code enforcement off.
I mean.
First. Go ahead.
The sheriff.
We're gonna go more on the sheriff and the sheriff can handle, I'm sure, unless we can find the fourth officer, it's great, it's a budget. But, and I know there is code enforcement discussions happening, but um who's gonna find them?
I think, I think just concern that the cost, the more that, the longer we wait, the, even if it saves it two thousand per, per deer and there's a hundred and they keep populating, it, it's gonna get.
It's never ending.
It's gonna get out of reach for as a town, as a town to do that, so.
Yeah.
That's the only reason I want to move it forward, because it's raining coming.
Well, and that's one of the biggest reasons is you, I mean, I think that really every, I love the wildlife, but you can't throw, you know, flowers in your front yard and that's kind of what's tough is we have the flower pots out here that they spray down with the deer stuff constantly to keep them, the deer from eating and, you know, we really wanna move towards town communication and it, and it is tough to have that.
I just, I wonder if there would just be a, a parallel approach that we could do where we could, yeah, if you keep the ordinance, writing the tickets, the warnings, so that we can at least help ourselves.
Well, instead of waiting for the, you know, like seeping out this bunch of deer and getting rid of them, we need to wait until they're endangered or something.
Well, we've had nonstop reports of that, law or.
I know, but they have sometimes.
The problem is, it doesn't sound like, do you have to have you, especially depending what time of year it is, unless somebody can identify that particular animal, it doesn't sound like they're able to, so I guess the policy in two guys' court, that really, if, if you guys wanted to do a program, it appears like nuisance ordinance is your method or not, and that's a policy decision you guys have to make as far as, and again, you guys have limited resources and everything else, so it's two guys' determination of what is right or wrong, you mean or not, and there's no right or wrong answers, it depends on how you guys feel like the resources spent and everything else. That you guys don't believe in that mechanism for doing it, which would be the official ordinance and like I said, we can tweak that as much as we want. But if you don't want to do it, that's also fine, because that's, this is not something you guys legally have to do, this is just an, for just giving you guys your legal options. So, policy determination is your basis, thanks.
Like many other ordinances we have, we do pass an ordinance and they can just not get poured or we can.
Well, it can be there when we do do, officer.
That's, that's kind of my thought is, at least we're a little more proactive, maybe there'd be a handful of people that appear a hundred dollars to give them stuff. You know, and sometimes just a handful of that.
You do need enforcement, I'd say that would be already there for them to enforce.
Yeah. There's something to be right out the door.
That's right.
So, I want to may I ask you a question on chapter six thirty five that was presented on packets here. Um when we talk about ODFW policies, um you know, it's saying that the purpose is for issuing kill permits to take deer within. I know this is a little different than what we're talking about the speed ordinance, but it no means, I misunderstand it sounded before that ODFW can't do anything until we do something.
Yes.
And it does seem to lead that way.
If you go to the, um, if you go to the, um, chapter six thirty five, oh four three, oh two seven, oh departmental responsibilities.
Yeah, I'm seeing that.
So section one, it says, in cities where this department determines your population does cause for public nuisance.
You do have to declare nuisance, but it sounded like the department, which is ODFW, declares that there's a, the population is reaching a public nuisance level, that's the department's role responsible, not ours.
Just a second.
I don't, I don't think, I don't see I'm reading that.
See, and that's why I was confused, but all the conversations I have had have been told that we have to have the ordinance in order to then basically issue us the tax. That's all they're doing is issuing us.
You're, you're right in your interpretation, I think, but um it doesn't say we can't have the ordinance, that it can.
I agree, but the ordinance that we're talking about.
Is that, I mean, when are they gonna declare, um, you know, whatever the population probably are?
And there's more to it.
We, if we just.
Yeah, and actually, more, the more I'm looking at, the more I'm looking at this one, I think this is their determination, their, this, what we were talking about was a separate Senate bill. So, and I, again, I don't know, because, because going to four, going to four ninety eight, four one twelve, they have, the department has made a nuisance determination it doesn't sound like they've made that either, because they would have to go property owner by property owner, so that's not real feasible because you're, unless like you said, you've got massive damage on a particular section or whatever, it's gonna be a hopscotch of. So there's a particular process for ODFW to do it, or this other one is to enable us to do it?
I don't, I don't think this is the right ordinance that, that was passed in regards to.
Correct, that's, that's, this is a sep, this is a parallel process for ODFW to declare public nuisance.
Although it does say one of one nineteen, which is when that was passed.
Right, my guess is they did multiple tracks, especially when, like I said, um maybe you've got like a vineyard inside municipal limits or a small orchard or something along those lines, so that's what this is looking like.
And, and it's my understanding, when we pass the ordinance, if we have the enforcement, then ODFW will.
Do the population study.
Collaborate, yes, they will not, like, I mean, there's no other part except for them issuing the permit because they see that the emergence had less. And that's it, so which, I mean. The expense of this.
Yeah, that's that, particularly.
But it's.
Not our ordinance, except for the law that's out there.
I referenced it in here.
Because I think that.
I think I referenced it in the ordinance, but if not, yeah, I think it should be a Senate bill, that's what I think. Now, this, it, does the council want to, before this, or like maybe redraft it with that, um set up fine schedule, is that what you guys are thinking about? Or what do you base, what's your preference as far as?
Well, I think we need to get something in place, because whether we have an ordinance officer now or we have one later, once it's in place, once we do the ordinance officer, it's there, it's being enforced, we don't need to wait for it to go through and we argue about for six months before we pass it. Well, ultimately, if we pass something, we're now meaning to assign who's taking those calls, who's gonna do something. If we're gonna say we're not doing anything until a nuisance enforcement officer in place, then we should make that statement now so that people aren't automatically now assuming that we're gonna.
Oh, yeah.
Start dealing with this.
Right, on their neighbor.
Um because we, we don't have a real plan. It's an ordinance, doesn't really save a plan, because I remember reading it saying, you know, when we first read it, who's gonna do the work? Because I don't think that's been determined, so. And if we're thinking it's the sheriff, they haven't pulled in, we haven't asked about it yet, and to my dogs at least.
Even when you send letters out in the ordinances, people don't, unless you have that enforcement officer, it's not gonna.
I'm sure they're.
Get letters back all the time.
So, I think we need to retable this until we.
I'm not opposed to passing it, I mean, people like.
We we still need to change the um.
Yeah, the B schedule.
Are you guys okay with that state B schedule with the first being a warning?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay, and then my suggestion is, if you guys are okay with this, that it's either a code enforcement officer or law enforcement that is contracted or um in a, in a memorandum agreement with us, that way, community partner, potentially the sheriff's department or somebody else might be able to do that. So if you guys are okay with that, that privilege, I can modify that, that direction, if that's a consensus in the council.
And we have this going effective thirty days, or something.
It would be effective. We could take out the emergency clause and then have it effective in.
And pick a date, like say July first, and figure out what in the meantime.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
I would be okay with passing one that was out a little late, so we can figure out who's gonna do the work in the meantime, because maybe get an agreement on place on.
So I just wanna.
Thirty days is too short for us to figure out what we know. But I do agree, we gotta have it on books, because if we do figure something out, we wanna know who's enforcing. I just don't want the public to start making calls and then soak up somebody who's ready with time, they don't have a lot to just can't work.
So, do I have a consensus of the council that you want the redraft to have an effective day of July first, twenty twenty? The adoption of the state fine schedule with a first offense being a warning?
And then the violations that.
And then it adds each, each proceeding violation that goes up from D, C, B, and A.
So I'm gonna just noted that in the budget, which we're gonna talk about scheduling, that we talked about this.
Yeah. And also then, that you guys wanted to be able to be enforced by either, yeah, contracted law enforcement, a nuisance enforcement officer, or um another law enforcement agency that has, am I able to do this or something along those lines? Okay.
Okay. Let's move on. Um T-NET service contract town hall computer resolution number nine seventy-two. I would, you know, we need somebody local to work on our computers, because right now I think we're going through, uh, spectrum?
We're we're doing T-NET, we're just paying them by the hour.
Oh. Okay.
So they're just charging us per issue that they sell.
Network.
Instead of a flat rate.
But we want to, it, and we would still be thanking them by the hour.
No, it's a flat fee, they can also let whatever, whatever it takes.
I I'm sorry.
That's all right, I haven't seen.
The contract now has stepped up or, you know, certain areas.
Yeah, we reduced it like a number of hours.
It's there, whatever we need, they're doing, that's what they've agreed to. Um if our, it does have a provision for modification, if it looks like we change, if we upgraded to, let's say Windows upgraded to Windows fifteen or something, I don't know, some ridiculous new server thing we decided to do. If our network architecture changes dramatically, they do have the ability to renegotiate. But if, as long as it stays basically in current configuration, it's pretty much limited on their part, and they didn't see the bulk of that for eight hundred dollars on.
Um as a frame of record, I did call RASH to get other pricing from other firms that would do this. Their hourly rate goes from a hundred and fifteen an hour up to a hundred and sixty-five an hour. So.
Yeah, their pricing, I'm not even concerned about it, I just wanted to make sure it was fair on both sides, you didn't over inundate them, and they go, wow, what did we sign up for, you know?
Well, and the other thing is, this is a, this is a one-year contract as well, so if it does look like that needs to be changed, the parties only agree it, only renew it upon mutual agreement. So if, this is kind of a test run to see how this thing goes the first year. And if it doesn't work out, say it doesn't renew, if it does, or it needs to be modified, the renewal, and then deal with some of that, that's kind of the basics.
And then if there is major change, they have the right to negotiate.
Correct.
With additional hours that's in payment.
Yes.
Okay.
So the only question I had, which I'm still kind of looking to on those, eight hundred works out to roughly ten thousand.
Yeah.
But where in our budget was this, I mean, how much have we been spending in years past like this? I'm trying to look over our budget right now and just see which finals coming out, just to make sure we're within, I see computer, computer software line and sell an internet line. Um just more of which, you know, computer equipment line, but none of those are near the other than to sell them in and back. Do you know exactly where this is coming from, ten thousand dollars? What am I truth to that? If it's fifteen, then great, we're saving money, but if it's one hundred, again, twenty four hundred a year, worth of seventy-five.
I I can get back to you on that, if that works for you. Yeah, I don't know.
It's not a huge expense, and it sounds like it's a good thing, I just, you know.
I understand your question, I I could get back to you on that if you would like, um.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna be fine, I mean, hopefully we've been spending less than, I mean, our whole budget line for town hall is, you know, is considerably more than that, obviously. So I think we'll be fine to be able to allocate this money that way, but I just wanted to see it on the budget line. And I just don't see where, how we've been paying for this.
It's it's hard to compare this coming two years with the past, because we've been operated by the skin of our teeth with no support. And we've been asking this person on the street, that person, I've asked Scott to come and help me several times, and we leaned on Josh from the county, and he started the kind of, of his art. He's came over and and did quite a bit of work for us, and probably won't even show up on our ACT tech bill. Um but we just, you know, we've pretty much borrowed our way out of business. And we do have some major projects coming up that we're gonna be working on from T-NET, uh we're definitely gonna get our money's worth out of them. I I think, uh, you know, we're gonna be moving all of our servers into a security cabinet, and there're gonna be, you know, forty to sixty hours probably, getting everything moved in and filled up and secure, so they've got a lot of messes to clean up.
So what is ACT tech? You mentioned that.
That's, that's the outfit that we were, uh, we have been contracted with in the past, so that's, that's kind of things.
Okay. Yes.
Josh Sabroski from.
So, we don't even have our internet with them? Difficult.
With T-NET, we we don't have our internet with T-NET right now, but we're talking about getting them as a redundancy line coming in, so that one goes down.
Yeah.
Of course, in Lakeview, you know, if something goes down, they're all on the same train anyway, but uh.
Yeah, it seems like those would go hand in hand.
So.
Yeah.
I'm not sure of this, um but maybe we could potentially that we, um, figure out a budget and make it sure that it's also divvied out for this expense amongst the budget, or all the departments that are using this. Um because just similar to what the county does and all the other districts, the department agencies do, is that it's allocated to each of those departments. A percentage of whatever it may be. So, eight hundred seems reasonable, and I know it's a very small item, I know we need better service, and we need not to be just trying to find something. This is a good degree, and I I believe, so I'm not sure.
And I'll just tell you.
Resolution nine.
Just something one.
Yeah, it's.
Favor?
Well, I I I.
I was approved.
We, I was just mentioning last month, it's got like four hundred dollars.
On, new business? Uh thank you, Melchior from Hannah Morgan. On the donation of a decorated tree, the community partnership did have a festival of trees this year. Uh they netted forty-two hundred thirteen dollars five cents, which will support the LCP as they continue to out here restoration. Um most exciting news began two thousand twenty twenty is maybe a community partnership that just received a one hundred thousand dollar gift from the Reeder Family Foundation. They used those monies to purchase the south side of the KDB building. They will own the building on the north side of the out here. The LCP will have the room needed for the theater restoration, dressing rooms, updated restrooms, a larger concession stand, an office, and potential for a true community theater, which will be realized. So I think that was a great deal. I enjoy donating a tree to them every year. To move on down to Occupy E Street, that time again. See, I'm writing with you, requesting street closure by eleven twenty twenty. This will be our tenth annual Occupy E Street Fair and Car Show. Need E Street closed from the fitness to the chamber building, and First Street from the highway to Ameritile. So we hope the town will become more involved than ever. As you know, that's become a very popular event, so the Lakeview and Lake County several projects have been accomplished with the money raised. You now advertise statewide through a three-year deal for Lakeview. Our community has a lot of potential, and a lot can be accomplished by working together, so please mark your calendars and come join us. Thank you for your consideration, and we hope you'll be able to come and enjoy the day. Might be some chairman of Occupy E Street.
I'm queer. Where's the request for the E Street celebration?
Uh second, I'll second. Most of them made second, so in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. All right, let's move on down to. I mean.
The end of office.
Do you want me to speak or you want me to?
Go ahead and read my letter. Whatever you feel comfortable with.
Okay. The Seraptimus International of Lakeview is requesting the use of the city, of the town of Lakeview parking lot up on E Street. Um so that we can do our CalPye Bingo, uh, event there during the Irish Day celebration. In years past, we've done, we did it one year at the fairgrounds, we did it at the bowling alley, and this year we feel strongly that we want to be down and bring more activity to downtown. Um and along with that, we would also like permission to invite vendors to Occupy E Street to have food booths and other activities going on E Street during the Irish Days celebration on March the fourteenth. We would like to use, we'd like to set up on March the thirteenth, uh the high school, uh Mr. Louis's class is going to paint the grid for us. And we think the panels are going to be donated by Barnum Feed, Gary Denise. So we're talking about setting up Friday night, the night before. Uh we have talked to the Chamber of Commerce to make sure that we're not interfering with Jessica Bogart's and the parade. And she said, not at all, that they'll, they'll run their parade down the street. And so we think if we set up Friday night, it would be better so uh we wouldn't be interfering with the parade, with our trucks coming in, the panels on, and the cow and so forth. So. I I I'm the chair of the committee, Joyce Mobley is co-chair with me, and here's our CalPye Bingo flyer. Um yeah, okay, yeah, I didn't have this, I wrote on because I, I made my flyer, forgot to tell you where you can buy the tickets. The eBay tickets, sheer experience, High Country Real Estate, the Lake County Examiner, and from any Seraptimus member. So we request, respectfully request permission to use the town parking lot on the evening of the thirteenth and the day of the fourteenth.
Are you wanting just the use of the lawn, or you want permission with the vendors as well?
Well, we also, well, we would, we would like to invite, uh invite vendors. I don't know whether the vendors need to come to the town for individual permission to set up their potatoes.
Wait, planning the vendors to be.
Now, that was my only thought completely.
Um on on the main street, like they did, I think, on Fourth of July, I think, once.
On E Street, on E Street, uh-huh. We haven't even come up with a list of them yet, because we wanted to talk to you before we started encouraging people to think that way.
On E Street, yeah, yeah.
You know, we probably should get permission from the town before we start.
Would that interfere with the parade if they're on?
That's my only concern is.
No. Oh, no, they're not creating the street, they'll just stay up on the sidewalks. They would have to ask each of, if there are businesses, they would have to ask the thing, put their, put their potato stand in front of a business. The Casey hamburgers, for instance, they could be on, on the corner of the, parking lot with us. The Casey burgers.
I know in the past, they've used the courthouse lawn. I don't know if that's still an option or what then.
I think they did, they haven't used it for CalPye Bingo.
No, 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 for the vendors, because my only concern is just that vendor location.
Kind of out of the way where all the actions.
I know, it'd be on E Street. It wasn't super good, but.
But in years past, they've always been on the sidewalk, and I don't think it's ever been a problem. We just kind of make E Street really busy with the whole event. But we would like to ask for them to be on E Street. If you, but we would love for you to join our committee, you have some really good ideas.
Well, I, I think it's awesome, warming, get people out there is great. I know when they have it at the courthouse, it wasn't, that was a tough year because grand law would really.
And that can happen too, but if they're on E Street, at least they get under some of the onings.
Yeah. I think it's great, I don't know what the legality of asking the owners, property owners.
I think you guys can authorize as far as you go, but again, they do need to ask each property owner, might get permission with various property owners.
Do you have a motion for CalPye Bingo to take part in one?
I'll make a motion to approve that, well, the CalPye Bingo and the vendor.
Okay, second.
Second.
Can you motion made second, vote in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I, can I ask just a quick question? Can we post a sign on our social media feed?
Yes, I'll bring you a clean copy, because you see, I, I am the type setter. I did the, I did the program, I forgot to put where you buy the tickets.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yep. Did you pick a line?
No.
I did she, oh.
I know, I never.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on down to. What's your calendar?
It's like, good thought, it's a time to like to put this together, um pressing issues with us, um I don't know if you make every, every meeting.
Are you talking about budget specifically, or the calendar?
Yeah, it's really counts, the budget, calendar, so. All means what I have all the.
It's that's.
Oh.
But I.
Oh, I'm here.
I.
My dress doesn't look here. You can't see it.
Well, okay, I'll.
Okay.
I'm very pleased that we have a calendar, the show last year, it's kind of like, see the.
Yeah, it's great. Yeah.
This is a pleasant change.
It's in advance.
Do we, do we need to, um, do anything else by appointing a budget officer at this point? This fact is gonna be still there into March.
When we have our first meeting, this probably our first meeting.
Yeah.
Today, today just wants to approve this calendar.
I need to, I need to find out, Dawn?
Yeah. Yes.
How many vacancies do we have open?
They want second.
Two.
Two? You need to, you need to advertise for volunteer partner.
As far as I know, two, because the others haven't got back to me. So right now I just have two. And we did have.
So as soon as possible, just contact them and then advertise whatever.
I'll call again in the morning, just to make sure.
Ask for this calendar, I wish.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Two seconds with that, sorry.
Maybe they.
Can counsel him, counsel.
So we went over this last time, and I had to sneak out for four days, so it looks pretty good to me. I do have, um, one day.
Spring rate, oh yeah, spring rate, I.
Yeah. For twenty-fourth of March.
Is spring rate, how many of us are gonna be here?
Well, I think that's meaning, I mean, that this doesn't mean we can't cancel one, I can realize it's due to that Christmas holiday, that's why I was thinking of having.
But just looking ahead at time, if we, I mean, our regular agenda for schedule is the second and the fourth, but knowing that that's pretty vague, so.
Well, folks, one thing I'm gonna throw out there, as far as, remember, you're going right into budget season, so I don't know that you want to have stuff, you may want to move that one just that one time to thirty-first, just so that you're not getting too crowded. just that one time to thirty first, just so that you're not getting too crowded as far as your, especially if anything budget related comes up, or meeting gets appointed, or one meeting gets too cold. You don't want to derail the budget process, if you have a very limited window to get it done, 'cause you don't get it done by the first, it's problematic.
And, and on there, on the twenty fourth that says review, town manager, is that gonna be done in a workshop at three?
Executive.
It was just executive, okay.
Can we move that all back to the thirty first, do you think?
Yeah, I think we're
I think that'd be nice, yeah.
Okay. Can you maybe have a little example?
I saw one that doesn't weigh too far, common plans.
That was probably a work session, I'm trying to schedule a work session once a quarter for you all. Um, you could change them. That would be part.
I wouldn't change it, 'cause I believe what you guys are, I believe the reason you guys were doing that was to make sure you're keeping up with revisions you're doing to the logic tax resolution, so.
Right.
That would should, they should stay there, and then you need more work sessions added to that.
So, uh, just So, I do have a question, it's not necessarily concerning our schedule, but it has to do with, uh, paid holidays. And so, what I see on the third of July, with Fourth of July being, you know, Saturday, is not the Fourth, the third of July then a full paid holiday, and they're off.
No.
It's not, it's not
It's not, it's not.
Yeah, it is, if it's on a weekend, it's gonna have to
Is it not from the town?
It could be.
It's not, you guys haven't done it, it's not in your contract, in your contract?
If we get, only if it's during the week, is how I read it to our contract, maybe I misread it, but
Maybe we can be more generous in the future, we'll, we'll look at that.
How about you just be generous now, darling?
I don't think we can make that call, it's really
It's a new content.
But you, you, it's contracts.
Guys, like, I, I would
I just was curious on that, it was like
No, I would, I would, this would probably can't be, but we'll change that now, now, 'cause those were negotiated.
Yeah, well, anything to change It's actually in our, um, ham, in our employee handbook, so if we go back and revert back to that, it is probably balanced.
It's in, I think it was
Can we not change, though, the date for Christmas and Thanksgiving closing at nine, paid or under, I mean, like
I think all, it's all contracts, it's all, it's all your
So that
We'll bring it up later, man, after, I mean, we'll get to that.
Or which one?
I, I just come there because I just know that most anywhere that we try to get a hold of, everybody's gonna be like gone, you know?
Oh, yeah, that's a good one.
Yeah, so Well, that's, Christmas, a lot of people celebrate, you know, the nice, we've celebrated a tree, it seems like, that's the sign. So
So do you want a motion on this calendar?
Let's approve it, so I can
Really, okay, so
But I would suggest you do it as amended for that one shift, and
Yeah, 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 so I'm not sure if you approve, um, the town council schedule with the amendment of the twenty fourth of March being moved to the thirty first.
What changes has been?
And, y'all changes.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, you're second.
I second that.
Okay, vote favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go.
Okay.
You can say what else. You're none, can we go to turn the meeting? Four fifty-five.